Yeah, it's steamier.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, just enough to raise the humidity.
Right, exactly.
I'm putting it the whole way down to two it was pouring until Marlborough.
Are we on?
Seven o'clock.
Is that working?
Yeah, go ahead.
What do you think I forgot? Ed?
Got to call in the meeting to order. This is a Board of Selectmen Wednesday, July 17th, 2019. And if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And Rob has indicated he may be late and may not make the call. So we can go ahead with this, Sue. And note, I'm going to look for approval of the agenda. And we do have to add Inman Wetland's commission to 8D, Board Commission Committee Changes. And with that adjustment, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second, as amended, right?
As amended. And discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have one set of minutes from June 19th. And I've looked them over and they seem to be okay to me. Sue, you got a chance to look at them? Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes, the regular meeting, June 19th, 2019, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And just one thing I'd like to make a note of, it's precisely 50 years ago tonight that it's, I get it right, Neil Armstrong, Buzz Aldrin, and Michael Collins were on their way to the moon. It launched on the 16th, 1969. Incredible effort, 10-year effort on the part of America to make something happen. And very, very impressive. And one of the things that's always been of note to me was that on that occasion, all of America, virtually everyone, was part of that and pulled together to make it happen. It wasn't that we hired somebody, it wasn't that it was, you know, just a particular group of people or businesses. America as a country pulled together and did it. It's something we need to see more of in the future. Anyway, that said, correspondence. We do have a letter from the East Hattam Free Public Library and Reading Room Association. And it says, Dear First Selectman Lyman, the board members of the East Hattam Free Public Library and Reading Room Association are requesting the town of East Hattam to take over the operation and ownership of the library per the accepted stipulation agreement granted by the court on April 22nd, 2019, signed by Joanne Maynard, President. And I've been looking for that for a long time, and it's now being offered to us. We will be going to town meeting.
Where is the stipulation agreement?
I have a copy in there. I mean, it was presented to the court.
Oh, we didn't get a copy of it.
I'm sorry?
We didn't get a copy of it.
You didn't get a copy of it here. But that's kind of dated at this point. I don't know if we ever did hand out a copy. But the court approved it, and then it was up to the Reading Room Association to make the offer to us.
Right, but we're not, I mean, we still have to go through a whole process, right?
We're going to go through a process of taking it to town meeting, having, I would imagine, a public hearing of some sort, and discussion about it, and then taking it to a vote at town meeting.
So the selectmen aren't discussing it?
We just got this. And this is to make you aware. But I need to talk to the lawyer and make certain of the process that we're going to be following as we move forward.
Okay. Can we get a copy of the stipulation agreement?
Yeah, I imagine. I must have two or three copies over there. I mean, that was back, what was it, Linda? Back in March or April, that that went through, was presented to the court. We'll get your copy.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's the extent of the correspondence. First Selectmen's report. Number of things that I want to touch on here. And maybe Laurie, I'll let you go first, and so you can get by that and get out of here if you'd like.
Thank you very much, Ellen. That's appreciated. Reporting for East Hattam Ambulance, our progress since I was here last time for the month of June, our mutual aid rate is at 7.8 percent. And that is perfectly within acceptable limits. As we've discussed before, there were a couple calls that were done during that timeframe when we didn't have the paid staff available during the day. But other than that, we're really doing well, really pleased. The use of the paid staff is declining slightly, so we'll see how that goes. And our response time has gone from an average of 10 to 13 minutes during the month down to four minutes.
That's remarkable.
It's wonderful. So we're working on developing a new training program. We're having the Stop the Bleed courses, one in July, one in August. And there's going to be an EMR class, Michael Davis, First Approach. We'll be teaching it this fall, starting in September here in town. So we're hoping to get recruit some people there.
Terrific. Now, two things. The Stop the Bleed, that's this Saturday, 9 o'clock, 9:00 to 11:30?
Back to 11:00.
Where's that located at?
It's at Company One. And we're asking that people sign up by calling the ambulance number, which is 860-873-2185.
Okay, because I wanted to attend that.
To register. We just ask that people do it to register. The Stop the Bleed course is a nationally recognized program that helps train people in how to stop bleeding in emergencies, whether it's a personal emergency at your house or whether it's a mass situation. It was created by trauma surgeons based on what they've seen that people need, everybody needs to be trained, just like you're trained in CPR. Another thing that's happening that day during the Stop the Bleed course is how to do bystander CPR, which is no mouth-to-mouth because people aren't comfortable with that. So it's going to be bystander CPR, which is all about compressions. So anybody that wants to sign up, it's two hours. It's great for anybody to know. It's a great skill to have. They just had an accident a few weeks ago, I think it was on I-84, where somebody used their skills to stop somebody from bleeding and save the guy's life.
I mean, that's, you know, I've talked to Ron about that, and he's the, I don't know what you call, point of light.
I know he's the guru. He teaches all over the United States with it.
And he's been very generous to the town in terms of bringing us to that.
Yes. And he donated a kit. The kits are a little expensive. They're over $1,000. And he donated a kit to the ambulance to use. And the ambulance also purchased the kit for instruction purposes.
One thing on that, I had stopped down at the firehouse number one and was asking about it, because I didn't know exactly where it was going to be or what was going to happen. It's not on their schedule that I'm aware of, their internal schedule. They might want to check on that.
I will check with Dave and Steve on that because that's up to them to schedule that one.
And I'm hopefully going to be there myself for that.
Okay, just please call that number. Leave your name if you're interested.
I just recorded it.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just a quick question. The percentage of the 7.8 percent. So one of the things that we should track, right, so then in a year we can follow it, is the cost associated with bringing the staff in, right, your paid staff, just so people know, well, yes, you know, our call rate or whatever it's called, having mental block on what it's called. But with 7.8 percent, but we stopped it, it cost us X amount of dollars to get this percentage down to a reasonable amount.
It cost the ambulance that.
Yes. Yes.
We have to be clear with that because after some of these meetings, people have thought that the town is paying for these services. So we have to be clear that the ambulance is absorbing the services, paying for the service of.
Correct. Correct. But, so, in the long run, right, so if you made over so much money, it would come back to the town. But this is going to be an additional expense to the town. I just want to make sure that we have an understanding that, like, after a year, you should be tracking this. I just don't want to, I'm just saying, I just want to track.
We track it all.
As to what it's costing you to get the numbers down.
We track the calls.
I won't be here, though.
Mutual aids, we track the use of.
Just saying.
Town staff, we track all sorts of data.
Thank you, people. Yep.
All right. How's that, Laurie?
Aye.
Okay. The one comment that was missing was the ambulance and the accident that happened there, which people should be aware of.
You can speak to that. That was.
Okay.
I don't know the details. I have not received an accident report. So all I know is the ambulance, the town-owned ambulance hit a deer, and it's out of service.
Well, you summed it up. It was scheduled to go into Eddie's, actually, last Monday. And now it's in there for a little more repair than it had planned on.
Right.
But that is out of commission, so we're operating with a single ambulance at this point.
Single ambulance, and we anticipate, I was told by Dave, that it would be about three weeks for repairs. Don't know.
See what happens with that. I think that's a matter of getting the parts that they need.
Yes.
The parts are pretty basic. I looked it over afterwards. But it takes time to get them. Okay. Sue, any questions there?
No.
Okay. Moving on, I wanted to respond. Rob had asked at the last meeting about the speed calming bumps, hollows. And I talked to Beth about that again. And she said the problems we've got are that they tend to collect water, sand, they drain poorly. She doesn't really have the staff to maintain them properly. And in most cases, she doesn't feel they're appropriate to rural roads, and particularly straightaways, where people tend to be moving faster, where it could impact them. She doesn't care for them, doesn't feel they're appropriate for us. That's where we stand on them right now. And I'm more inclined where there's an issue, and we're talking about Hungerford Road in particular, where people are really moving too quickly, I'd rather see more stop signs and four-way stops or whatever. We've got sufficient of those in the towns that another one wouldn't be a big deal. But in any case, we're not likely to wind up with the bumps or the hollows to try to calm speeds. Fox Yard, scheduled for opening this July, the end of this month, we're having problems. The load ratings were improperly done on the initial spans that were put in. They've gotten replacements. And the last word was that permeability is now a question. I guess the state comes in and checks the cement for permeability. And they found a problem with that, and they're looking for a solution on it. Again, my guess is that's going to need to light again for a bit in a while. We don't seem to do well on bridges in this town. We've got a call from DOT. Mount Pernasis is going to be closed on the 13th and the 14th of August. There's a pipe that has to be replaced, an under-road pipe. DOT needs to close the road to do that. It's going to be, it's going to be located between Bog and Shannongan, closer to Bog, just a little bit west of where the power was down last, you know, a year and a half ago. And, you know, I talked to them about it, and their rewriting, routing and detours are going down the Hopyard Road to 82, all the way around and back up, which the state law says that they have to stay on state roads. But in this environment, that gets pretty crazy. Shannongan and Bog will give you a way-by, and then Smith Road down to Alger and Colchester Turnpike will give you a better way-by. And it is going to be two days, the 13th and 14th of August. We're working on Neptune. We've got an RFQ out for that, for the design and construction administration and inspection. That's going to be open July 18th at 2:00 p.m. We've had quite a response in terms of interest in that, so we expect a pretty good response on it. And want to get that project moving forward. But in spite of that, it looks like it's going to be a considerable amount of time to get all the work done, to get it finished. So, but at least it's starting to move forward at this point. We've had a posting for a police officer. That also closes on the 18th at 4:00 p.m. So we're moving forward on that as well.
How many applicants do we have so far?
The three? Yeah, three applications. And so we'll see what happens with that one. But that's starting, that's actually tomorrow at 4:00 p.m.
One qualified.
Building Department. There was some discussion. Mr. Shaw was in and upset about the way the fees look. Bob Kastner's talked about it. I'm working with Bill Throdey, and we're reviewing the fee structure we have right now. He's in agreement that there needs to be some correction, that we may have overdone it here and there on it. And I'm expecting that in August, we will have a final version to bring to the Board of Selectmen for revision.
Well, why does he think there needs to be revision? And that we used?
We did that a year ago and revised it. And I asked him to review what had happened. I've had a number of complaints about it, that they're much higher than other towns in the area. He's looked at it, and he's said, yeah, some of it's right, some of it really is pushing it a little too hard. We're going to talk to the Board of Finance about it, make them aware of what's happening, and then bring it forward to the Board of Selectmen for review.
Okay.
We don't just often create new fee structures. We have to have them vetted properly.
Right. That's what, I'm sure we did that the first time, so.
We thought we were. And as I say, we've received quite a bit of complaint about it, and the sense that we are way out of line. And so I asked him to review that.
From more than one person?
Yes. Yes. And with some pretty detailed analysis that I've had a chance to look at, and said, you know, I think we need to look at this. What else have I got?
You have been on BB Road, haven't you?
I talked to Beth about that, and she is going to get to that. They're working on Wickham right now. And once that's wrapped up, and she's got the manpower, she's going to work on that.
So not everyone takes vacation at the same time, correct?
No.
Okay.
But we do have a much reduced staff in the summer. And that's pretty consistent, especially the Fourth of July and thereabouts. This is the only opportunity that our public work guys can take it. They aren't allowed to do so in the winter. And so you find that we're short staff pretty much all summer.
So what are they doing on Wickham? You mean the other side, the dirt side of Wickham? They're doing the dirt side of Wickham?
I haven't been down there to see exactly what they're doing. But it's the dirt portion of it that's being, you know, the gravel road is being reworked.
Okay, because BB is a mess.
I'm sorry?
BB is a mess.
I've driven it. I know what you're talking about. Especially when you come off the tar right into it, that initial spot, and then there's lots of potholes. And if there's traffic, it pushes you into the potholes.
I just think that it'd be a higher priority than the other part of Wickham.
I.
It's been two months now I've been asking about it.
I'm keenly aware of it. And as they say, I've got a commitment that as quickly as she's finished with what she's currently doing, that's next.
So how long is it going to take them to finish what they're currently doing?
I have no idea. I can't tell you.
Okay, can we find out for me?
I'll try to get that word for you.
Approximately when they're going to start BB?
Here we go.
Thank you.
We'll go after it. That's as much as I have any citizens' concerns. Randy?
Question. Always, Sue's requested about BB. The mowing, there's been a real delaying in getting mowing done. I notice it most on my way, but is that true for the whole town? Problem is, it's, of course, because the roads are growing out, and as you're aware, weeds that are, these invasives are just growing right out into the middle. People are having to pass very closely.
They're growing out into the road themselves?
Sure. So it's forcing cars to drive in the center of the road as opposed to the sides. So they did one pass on BB Road. Typically, they do two, cut it back. And I notice they won't do that one. The question is, is there a problem with the mowers?
I'll ask her about that. I do know that in terms of staff, with everything we've got from last year, the trees and the washouts and rebuilding gravel roads, they are absolutely straight up working. And, but I'll ask her about that and see where we stand. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Unfinished business. East Hattam Village Revitalization Committee. And 7A, there we go. We have been working on the, or I should say, we, they have been working on the RFP, and meetings, I believe, just about every week. And we're getting pretty close, and we should be issuing that RFP. We do have the single RFQ that we're moving forward with. And we're hopefully going to get that straightened around. We are also looking at the timeline on it, and there'll probably be some adjustments to that. That's allowed by the RFQ that we initially put out. And it's probably going to get extended a little bit farther out. And, but in any case, we're moving forward on that. Moving on, the transfer station. Sue, any questions on that, by the way? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Transfer station, looking at that. And I've been spending some time trying to deal with just where we are. And I got a little bit of a presentation discussion on that. What we've got up there is three people. That's the size of our crew. We're pretty generous in terms of time off. And each of those individuals, on average, gets something in excess of 40 days a year off. Total of 120 days a year where we're shorthanded by one person. Transfer stations open 200 days a year. It's four days a week, but with holidays and whatnot, we're down to about 200 days a year, which means two out of three days, we've got to staff a two at the transfer station. One of the things we have done, there was a great deal of discussion about the bulky waste and whether or not we were collecting what we should for it, that people were sneaking in, there were problems with that. And we have been staffing the scale with barricades down there, cones, all day, every day that it's open. We've had one guy down there operating that. We've gone to the extent where we're getting about 60 percent of the weight, the bulky weight that goes out of there, has been paid for. As we can tell, the balance, the 40 percent that remains, some is coming from the school. We've got evictions. When we do an eviction, the town winds up with a lot of stuff that we have to dispose of. The whatnot corner, which is at the transfer station, and that's basically where people can drop items that they don't want, that they feel someone else might have a use for. And people are allowed to take and remove stuff. It's one of the ideas there is to keep people from going back and going through the bins and putting themselves in danger. And we forbid people to actually scavenge from the bulky waste area, but they're allowed to take whatever's in the whatnot area. And that's become considerable. Beth has asked the guys to slow down on its removal. They've been inclined every day, at the end of the day, to take whatever's left and get rid of it, take it back and deposit it in the bulky waste. If you go up there right now, you'll find there's an awful lot of stuff. And eventually, all that's going to find its way to the bulky waste. And it's not that people are coming in with a truckload and leaving it there to avoid going back, but it's usually single or two or three items that somebody does feel are useful, that someone might want. And in any case, that's ending up in there. And then on top of it, whatever water falls, stuff picks up water and weight. Talking to Sue about it, and, Beth, I'm sorry, about it, and saying, is 40 percent reasonable for those items? She said, yeah, especially with the water. She said, anything that'll absorb water adds a great deal of weight. We're looking into how we can cover those. We've had two or three approaches.
We already talked about that, and I thought that was, I thought we were doing that a long time ago.
We're trying to do it. She had some fiberglass covers that were going to come over and do a very nice job. And when she started checking in them closely and doing the measuring, it wouldn't work. And she's still looking for a better answer. And we need one.
It's a long time.
I'm sorry?
It's a long time we've been talking about this.
It's a long time we've been talking about it. It's a long time she's been looking. We need an answer for that. In any case, the 60 percent is about twice what we were collecting on before. We are generating some income from that. But the problem that develops there is we've got a single staff person to oversee operations, two-thirds of the time.
Okay, can we just talk about the 40 days off? So each person has 40 days off?
Roughly 40 days.
Am I wrong? So do they work five days a week?
No, they work three days a week.
Okay, so that's.
Three, four, I'm sorry, four days.
Four days a week. Okay, so that's 10 weeks off.
In essence, that's our contract.
10 weeks off?
You got, if you're there two years, you've got two weeks, eight days. You know, I run the numbers to look at them.
I mean, that, we need to redo our, when's our contract up? Because that's ridiculous. I'm sorry. 10 weeks off. Even if there's 10 holidays in a year, there's two weeks. Okay, that's eight weeks.
Mm-hmm. As I said, we are incredibly generous.
Like, are you sure? That doesn't make any sense. How do people get 10 weeks off?
You're 13 sick days. That's what you get. You have four personal days.
13, so even when they only work 40s a week, they still get the same as, that's considered full-time?
That's the contract. That's the contract.
They work 40 hours.
They work 40 hours.
No, they work 40 hours a week, 10-hour days.
So that's what it is. Okay.
And between sick time, the personal time, the vacation time, I mean, it all adds up, the holidays, the time you do it all, it's remarkable when you start looking at the numbers. We are incredibly generous.
Yeah, that's just a lot.
I mean, it is what it is. Yeah. Contract is up 21, I believe, isn't it? Linda?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. I don't remember.
I think it's up in 21. Yeah.
I would love to have 10 weeks off.
It's, and to be honest, most of it gets used. They can accrue the sick time and use it for retirement purposes eventually. But it's a lot. Not arguing that. The problem that leaves us with is we got one staff person, two-thirds of the time up there. And we.
One staff person, two-thirds of the time, or two staff people?
Got two. One of them's down in the scale.
Oh, okay, okay.
We got one staff person running the whole operation. And one of the things we were going to implement that hasn't happened yet, and I'm still eager for it, but I'm not sure about it anymore, is reversing the flow.
So have we done nothing up there?
What?
Have we done nothing up there? I don't really go, so I don't know. Like, I thought we already reversed the flow.
No, we were going to reverse it, then they had the Ram failure. And I've been up there, I've been driving it backwards. You go up there after five o'clock, and I invite you to do it. And drive, no.
I would do it, I don't even know what, for what.
Let me finish where I'm going.
Okay.
You come around from below and come up the other way.
Yeah.
You've got all those concrete blocks there on the right. You can't see a thing that's going on up on top. You kind of pop up over on the top and wham, you're in the middle of it. And I did that a couple of times, and I said, I can't believe this. And I probably should have done it a long time ago. Till we revamp that, how you get in, so that people have visibility, or we're willing to increase the staff so we can have somebody there monitoring and controlling traffic. With one guy, two-thirds of the time up there, it's not safe, grossly unsafe.
Well, I think we need to revamp it, because we're not gonna hire someone else that we're gonna give forty days off.
I would tend to agree with you, but this is, and this was brought to my attention by the guys up there. I'm up there saying, okay, let's go. And they said, you gotta do a little more thinking about this, you gotta take a look at it. I said, well, what's going on? They said, it's completely unsafe, especially with one guy tied up down there at the scale now. And we're, as I say, two-thirds of the time, you've got two people there, and one's tied up. Scale is working, it's working extremely well for us. I don't know that I want to go away from that. But I don't know that we can do it with just one person there for that amount of time. And particularly right now, you've got all your seasonal people who aren't used to the town, who aren't used to being up there, to suddenly reverse everything on them, and you're gonna have a mess, you are gonna have problems, you're gonna have people getting hurt. And as I say, I invite you to go down there, do it after five, and the guys are all tired, they've been ten hours on the job, they want to go home. They'll stick around for a while to let you do some driving, just to get a feel for what it would be like. And as I say, please do that. Not, you know, not what I expected, and that blind corner going up into it, and it's right there where everybody's walking, all the traffic back and forth, it's immediate. You come in the other way, you kind of come up from behind, you get a chance to look it over, see where people are, see where the vehicles are, see what's happening, the way you come in right now, completely different. It's a.
So what are the next steps? Where are we going with it?
Right now, we're just gonna stay where we are, we're gonna keep weighing the stuff, and we gotta give some thought. I think after Labor Day, we can look at it and see where we want to go. Right now, it's busy. And that's kind of my report on that. That's where we stand right now. Moving on to citation hearing for the ordinance. That, there's been no movement on. The control of animals, the ordinance. What we're looking at is public hearing, and probably after Labor Day, and we're looking at September 5th for doing a public hearing for the control of ambulance, animals, ordinance. And tried to get something scheduled a little bit earlier, but vacations and people not being available gets in the way, and it starts to look like September 5th is a good day for it. But that's gonna have to be firmed up. And as far as the cemetery committee, once again, there's been no movement on that. And going into new business. Okay, we have the Resident State Trooper contract. We've got a copy of that available there. And it got revamped. The initial copy that came through had some issues with it, not the least of which was they were trying to do it for three years, which is not permitted. And state statute says it has to be two years.
So the police were trying to do.
So it's been corrected, I'm sorry?
Our police were trying to, no.
Our, this is the Resident Trooper program.
State of Connecticut. Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, no.
I'm not speaking very clearly. Anyway, just have a chance to look that over at all. It's basically the same contract, it's been revised a little bit here and there. Some things, IT stuff that's been revised. They did bring it back to the two years instead of the three that they were initially looking for. Some minor corrections here and there in it. They've added some little stuff, particularly IT stuff, and here and there a minor change in language. Rob has had a chance to look it over, he's comfortable with it as well. And so if you don't have a problem with it.
Then have a problem with it.
Okay.
My question on it was, hold on a second. I had one question, but it wasn't. Wasn't that important? Process, I think I was wondering what the process was for being able to, do you review the state trooper? Like, how, where's the supervision lie of the review process for the state trooper?
That lies within the troop, Troop K.
So you don't have any input on?
I have not made any put in that. If I had an issue with him, I would contact the lieutenant over there. But I am not given the opportunity to review him.
And there's nothing in here that really talks about being able to share a state trooper with another town?
Can't do it. That was looked into, and I'm trying to remember where, because it was a thought and came back that you cannot do that, not permitted.
By statute.
By statute.
And who, where do we find, where did we find that? Was that Nick Relo that found that?
I, I can't remember, six months ago, probably, six or eight months ago.
Yeah, I remember, because I mean, that, this would be a time I would say that we should put something in about.
Can't share them.
Okay.
Not allowed to do that. Because that's an idea that's been broached more than once that I've heard. Each time, it gets the same answer, you can't do that. You have a resident trooper, you have a resident trooper. Interestingly enough, Massachusetts has done away with the Resident Trooper program completely, and informed every town, every city, they will have their own police force or become a combined police force with some other town, but that they will not have resident troopers any longer. Resident troopers are basically limited to road patrol and major crimes. It's one of the changes that, you know, from time to time, I bring it up and talk about it with people, with troopers, and it may well come to Connecticut as well. Okay, that said, I'm gonna make a motion that Emmett J. Lyman, First Selectman, be in here with authorized to execute a contract on behalf of the town of East Adam for the state of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of State Police for the services of one resident state trooper for a two-year period from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2021. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. We have from Beth Lund, Health Works Director, a review of contracts for our transfer station, West Disposal, and her recommendation that we stay with Willimantic Waste. You can see the pricing on the front page of that. And to be honest, these prices are at or below what we had discussed last spring. Rob has requested that we postpone this. He has the question, and it's well put, of if recyclables start to make sense again, China starts to take them, and the cost of processing them goes down, that they become marketable again, how is this going to be adjusted, what adjustments might be made to the cost? This calls for a thirty dollars per ton disposal fee. At the moment, or up until the end of June, I should say, we were receiving five dollars per ton. It's still considered, you know, compares very well with the seventy-five dollars a ton for bulky waste or municipal solid waste. But if there is a market for them, perhaps there needs to be an adjustment or some provision for that. And as I say, he's asked that we hold off, postpone it until the next meeting. That shouldn't pose a problem. It has to go to the Board of Finance, which meets on the 12th, we meet on the 7th next. We should be okay on that one. Okay. Now we have, and I'm a little surprised we don't have anyone here for this. Request for a beer service. Hey, see, there we go. Basically, you've got our golf disc, for disc golf up in Nichols Field, and the PDGA, and that's Professional Disc Golf Association, is gonna be holding an event there at Nichols Field, and Steady Habits wants to attend and be able to serve beer at that event. And they haven't quite clearly defined how they want to serve the beer, whether they're gonna give it away or charge for it or whatever, on town property. We've made it clear that two things are required. They have to have insurance, and they have to be legal in terms of state statute. I contacted the liquor commissioner, commission today to talk about this. And what I was told, and I was kind of hoping they were here to discuss it, that they can't serve beer there. They can't do it off-site from their own operation unless they are a 501(c)(3), which they are not. And if they wanted to do it, they would have to have a licensed caterer with a liquor permit do the serving for them. And I haven't heard anything to indicate that they might be looking to do that. And without them here and without any further information on it, I don't see how we can move forward with this one.
I don't think we can approve it.
I couldn't, I couldn't vote in favor at this point. They haven't demonstrated that they have insurance, they haven't demonstrated.
Well, they said they're in the process of obtaining all necessary insurance and permits.
Yeah, that's not the same as showing me. And I want to see it.
We can't vote on it with the stipulation that they have their trooper's insurance and license before?
I mean, we've got a, we've got a motion here to approve the beer service at Nichols Field by Steady Habit Brewing Company for an awards celebration on Saturday, August 10th, 2019, contingent upon the host providing appropriate insurance coverage and if necessary, state liquor permits approvals. That's, that seems to cover it. And once again, I would like to have them here to explain exactly how they're gonna accomplish those.
Well, I mean, we don't really, as long as they get them, I don't care about how they get them. But they're not gonna do it unless they get them. So who cares how they get them?
The other side of it is, this is town property in a public setting, as opposed to a private party or a private organization doing some event at one of our buildings where liquor is gonna be served. And I'm not completely comfortable with that either.
Well, so so we do wine tastings at the libraries, right, or whatever they are, and we serve alcohol at the Grange, and we have alcohol, I mean, if they have the right permits and stuff, we do this already. I guess I'm not really seeing what the issue is.
Well, you know, stuff at the Grange or whatnot is a private party with a clear responsibility.
But isn't this a private party?
Well, the public, the general public is invited to this. That's, that's a little different from a private party.
I mean, anyone could be invited. Like, if I had a shower, I could invite the whole town.
I'd like to see that party in your backyard.
No, but I'm saying at the Grange, or I'm saying, like, you know what I mean? So I guess I'm not understanding what the issue is as long as they get the correct, the appropriate licensing. I guess I don't understand. I understand because it's on town property, but if we have the appropriate permits, licensing, insurance, whatever, then I don't know.
And it's properly catered, because they clearly are not.
That's again into, in the licensing. I guess I don't see a problem with it, but I, you know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something. So I, I, so.
You want to go ahead with it?
I mean, like, motion and the mall.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve beer service at Nichols Field by Steady Habits Brewing Company for an awards celebration on Saturday, August 10th, 2019, contingent upon the host providing appropriate insurance coverage and if necessary, state liquor permit approvals, unanimous aye. Any discussion?
I'll second it, how about that?
Okay. And one thing that I failed to know, which I should have, the Professional Disc Golf Association was asked to be the, and they are a nonprofit organization, was asked to be the sponsor for the beer, and made it very clear that they wanted no role in that part of it, that they would not sponsor the beer as the professional disc.
Association.
Association. And that if Steady Habits wished, and they are sponsoring this event, Steady Habits separately. If Steady Habits wanted to go after the ability to do that, they're on their own.
Okay.
Okay. That said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'll go with you, but I'm gonna be very critical of what they come up with, my way of.
Yeah, they have, they have things, they have rules they have to follow. So they need to get a license, and if they don't have the license, it's not gonna happen.
They, they need to get a licensed caterer, as best I, from talking to the liquor commission.
Okay.
There's no way they can do it.
Whatever they need to do it, but I don't care how they get it done, if they don't get it done, it doesn't happen.
We'll see what happens. We have board and commission changes in the Economic Development Commission, and we have a number of changes there. And this is from their minutes. And Irene Haynes resignation. And Irene Haynes resignation, Mr. Casner advised that due to Ms. Ms. Haynes' acceptance of a paid position with the town, she has submitted her resignation to the EDC Board. Motion was made by Mr. Parity, seconded by Mr. Bergeron, to recommend with regret that the board accept Ms. Haynes' resignation from the Board of Economic Development Commission. Unanimous aye. Mike Robidoux recommended as a regular member, Mr. Casner advised that Ms. Haynes, with her Ms. Haynes resignation, a regular membership was open on the board. Mr. Robidoux agreed to Mr. Casner's recommendation that he fill that position. Motion made by Mr. Parity, seconded by Mr. Bergeron, to recommend the Board of Selectmen change Mr. Robidoux from status from alternate to regular member of the Economic Development Commission, unanimous aye. Jess Stone recommended as an alternate. Mr. Casner advised he has spoken with Ms. Stone regarding the EDC. The commission has agreed that Ms. Stone would be a good addition to the board. Motion made by Mr. Bergeron, seconded by Mr. Parity, to recommend that the Board of Selectmen appoint Ms. Stone as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission, unanimous aye. And with that said, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the resignation of Irene Haynes from the Economic Development Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion to change the status of Michael Robidoux from a alternate member to a regular member, filling the vacant position with a term expiration of June 30th, 2021, in the Economic Development Commission. Get a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Jessica Stone as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission for a vacant five-year term to expire June 30th, 2000, five-year term, okay, 2020. Can you get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? It's a term underway right now, which is why the five years...
Okay, I'm like, well...
That threw me when I saw it for a second. But she's completing a term that's partially finished. And the Wetlands Commission. And we have a date of June 16th, 2019. It is a recommendation of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission that the Selectmen reappoint Randolph Dill to the Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2020. Please advise when it's official. Signed by Mary Agostini, Vice Chairman. And then we have, it is a recommendation of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, Selectmen reappoint Jennifer Burton-Reeve to the Commission for a two-year term expiring June 30th, 2020. Please advise when this is official. We have, it is a recommendation of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission that the Selectmen reappoint Brian Goff to the Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2021. Please advise when it's official. And that's signed by Randolph Dill. Proceeding one was also signed by Randolph Dill. And it is a recommendation of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission that the Selectmen reappoint Daniel Jane to the Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2021. Please advise when it's official, and once again, signed by Randolph Dill. And I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Randolph Dill and Jennifer Burton-Reeve as regular members for two-year terms to expire June, July 1st, 2020, on the Inland Wetlands Commission. Second?
I'm second, but I'm not understanding yet.
It...
It's reappointing for two years, but didn't, just expired June 30th in 19?
My understanding is that the renewal was overlooked last year when it should have occurred. And for both of them. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Brian Goff, Daniel Jane, and Mary Agostini as regular members for the two-year term to expire July 1st, 2021. And was there one additional sheet there that I missed?
Yeah, you did them all.
Nope, I missed Mary Agostini. Recommendation of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, Selectmen to reappoint Mary Agostini to the Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold it up for me. The tax refunds, I'm gonna make an emotion to award a tax refund in the amount as presented, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-three cents to Toyota Lease Trust. A second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Once again, public comment? Thank you. Just by way of announcement, the Planet Conservation Development, there's a public hearing July 23rd at 2019, 8:00 PM. This room, Municipal Office, complex. And so you're aware of Sue, and Rob hopefully will become aware by reading this. Because of a couple of conflicts, the birdcage and the waste, transfer waste contract, which we're going to be signing on the 7th, both of which have to go to the Board of Finance. And this has to go to the same public hearing on the 27th. Town meeting, rather, on the 27th. We won't be able to sign off on it until August 7th. So it's gonna have to come back. We're gonna have to have a special meeting on the 13th and the 14th in order to do this. I've got that all balled up. We will move this forward to town meeting on August 7th. And the town meeting should be scheduled for August 27th, 2019. And we'll need a special Board of Selection meeting to approve the call on either the 13th or the 14th. And...
Here's, here's the reason. Planet Conservation and Development only needs to go to Planning and Zoning and Board of Selectmen, and Board of Selectmen at your next meeting, Planning and Zoning is expecting the Board of Selectmen to move it forward to town meeting. I cannot put the call on that meeting because I have two outstanding things that need to go to town meeting. One is the gift acceptance of the bird nest from Netplay USA, and the transfer station contracts because they're multi-year contracts. I can't move them, I can't do the call on the 7th because both of those have to go to Board of Finance first. Board of Finance meets on the 12th.
Right.
So after the 12th, I need to have a meeting on the 13th or the 14th to approve the call to send it to town meeting so that I can get it into the newspaper, so it prints on the 22nd for the town meeting on the 27th. Got it?
Worse than a Rubik cube. Anyway, that's what's going on with everyone. Designed to confuse the daylights out of me. Anything else, Sue?
No, I'm good, I think.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion at 7:58 to adjourn. A second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There we go, thank you. And my apologies for that last bit of confusion. I had that all straight in my mind at one point.